...of the Lake Mills City Council to order for January 21st of 2025. Misty, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Curler?
Here.
Ms. Schmager?
Here.
Ms. Quaidno?
Here.
Mr. Fields?
Here.
Mr. Waters?
Here.
Thank you.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the great hot look for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, our next agenda item is Councilmember Board reports and acceptance of meeting minutes. We have one set of minutes from our last city council meeting, January 7th. Are there any corrections or comments on the minutes? Hearing none, we'll accept those minutes into our public record then. Next item is our Joint Rock Lake Committee monthly report. Do we have anybody? I didn't hear from Wendy. So it looks like we may not have anybody from Joint Rock Lake Committee tonight.
See, she's online?
Oh. Misty, does it look like anyone from Joint Rock Lake Committee is online?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for checking. Okay, so next is correspondence. Greg, would you like to kick it off?
Sure. I missed the last meeting, so I go back about four weeks, actually. So I've had correspondence on the library, the urban forestry ad hoc committee, the One Guy Development, and the lake levels is a more recent one for this week's meeting, actually.
Great, thanks. Michelle?
Yep, I got a couple from about Wangard, one about the fire department banquet, some emails regarding library support of the referendum, and the water level email.
Okay, Mary?
Nothing new to add?
Steve, any correspondence?
Basically, I had everything that was mentioned before and copied on the DNR letter.
Okay, and I had all of those that were mentioned. I also had a television interview regarding the Wangard development a week and a half ago, and I received a phone call just today with some ideas for the sentry site for redevelopment on the site from a constituent. Okay, thanks, everybody. So now it's our questions and public comment period, so the public is encouraged to address the council at this time regarding items on the agenda. Public comments may also be made on items that are not on the agenda if you have registered with the city clerk before the meeting has been called to order. The state's open meetings law discourages actions by the council on items that are not listed on the agenda. Please keep your comments limited to three minutes, state your name and address when starting your comments, and fill out the sign and sheet provided. And if there's anyone attending online, please type your name and address in the chat feature, and the clerk will let us know that you'd like to speak. So we'll start in the room. If people, I understand that a few people have already signed up, so please make your way to the podium.
Hi, my name is Linda Lyra, and I live at N 6565 Shorewood Hills Road. And I'm just going to make a comment. I'm going to read you something I wrote up today based on the apartment building land on Highway B. So I was contacted today by a good friend of mine who is also a builder and developer. His name is Tom Vogel, and he is the owner of Creekside Development. Tom built my house, my parents' house, and many other homes and condos in the Lake Mills community, and he was also a resident of Lake Mills for approximately 20 years. When Tom called me today, I had saw him over Christmas, and he called me expressing interest in purchasing this land on Highway B to perhaps build three duplexes for retirement-aged individuals. He's well aware of the environmental issues with the land, and he would be proposing to build these duplexes on slabs, meaning, you know, no basements as to not disturb the underlying environmental concerns associated with the property. Tom builds quality upscale homes and has built similar duplexes in other communities. Tom contacted Drake Daly today, and Drake had told Tom that several citizens had expressed interest in purchasing this property and keeping it as natural on developed prairie land. I don't know if that's the case, but that's awesome news. If that's the case, Tom agrees that keeping this area undeveloped would be ideal, yet if that should fall through, Tom sent a very brief email, a brief email to the city council today expressing his interest in purchasing the property and building three duplexes. He conveyed he would be happy to sit down with the property owner and the city council to discuss further and to see if this would be a good fit for the community. Tom's proposal to build three upscale duplexes sounds like a great compromise and would be in keeping with the standards and objectives laid out by the city in the 2040 city plan. Three upscale duplexes would maintain community feel, green space, and would not increase congestion in an already very congested area. So again, this was just some news that came to light today, and I thought it would. To me, it sounded like a great compromise, so I just wanted to put it out there for everyone. Thanks.
Thank you.
I wanted to be second because I can, I know Tom Vogel, have known him for a long time, and he has built--
Give her name and address?
N 6828 Shorewood Hills Road. He's, he does build quality construction, and he's a great person, has been here in Lake Mills a long time. I didn't know what Linda was going to say, but I'm actually going to address, when I speak, one of the places that he built. I want to talk about something a little different, but very important. The setback from County B for the new apartments is only 30 feet. I'm sure you're all aware of that. There will be three buildings, each at least 250 feet long and 25 feet high, built on that property 30 feet from the street. I got to thinking the other day about how horrible this would look, and I decided to get out my yardstick and measure different properties around the city and the town. And so I did that, and I hope when I talk about these visuals and these properties, that when you get together in closed session tonight, you think about in your mind where these properties are, because you'll know them all. The first one is Rock Lake Vista Condos, and Tom Vogel actually built the biggest building the nearest to the street. And those apart, those condos are on B across the street from the lake on the north end, just a few, you know, areas down from the proposed apartments that are going to be built. When you drive by there, those condos are 93 feet from B, from the street. That's three times more than these apartment buildings that are proposed. There's a lovely, there's a beautiful 93-foot, beautiful lush green lawn between the street and the condos, and it's well taken care of. It's beautiful. There's a sign 33 feet from B that talks about the Rock Lake Vista Condos. So if you take the time to drive down B, notice the sign, and then imagine, try to imagine, three huge apartment buildings 25 feet high, setback from the street. The other example is in town. The Bank of Lake Mills down from the library is 24 feet from the street. You all know how close that is. Imagine an apartment building there, six more feet setback. It would be horrible. Third example, we all know the corner of Main and Tyrenina Park Road where the Walgreens Clock Tower was. Well, I went over there today because I had measured in the past, but I wanted to be absolutely positive, and I froze my fingers off. I can tell you that from Main Street, from Main Street to the Walgreens, the beginning of the Clock Tower is 42 feet. That's 12 feet further back than these apartments would be. I was talking to someone--
It's three minutes, please wrap it up.
Okay, all right. But the best one is, I told you that, the best one is, I came here today, and I measured--
Barb, you need to wrap it up, please. You need to wrap it up, and you need to stay at the microphone, please.
From there, and that is 30 feet. So that is, so if we allow the complex to be built where I'm telling you, where you all know it is, we may as well put up a sign in front of coming into town saying, "Welcome to Sun Prairie, welcome to Cottage Grove, welcome to Wanakee," and we don't want that.
Thank you, Barb. Sorry, we don't allow applause, so there's respect for all viewpoints that come forward, so we just want to make sure that everybody has a chance to speak this evening, so. Who's next?
Can I point out that, that the apartments are not on the agenda tonight?
Oh, yes, thank you. I think people are aware of that, but the proposed development is not on tonight's agenda. Thank you for reminding me of that, Greg. Yes, okay, who's next?
Good evening. My name is Beth Naughton, and I live at W 7898, County Road B, Lake Mills. Thank you for allowing public comment this evening. I was happy to hear the Wangard proposal is paused and cautiously optimistic that the land is for sale. Before you adjourn to closed session on topic 11 tonight, where I hope you will be discussing the potential purchase of the Mike Durant property on Highway B, I would like to remind the city council of the smart growth principles from the 2040 plan that I believe are strong reasons to keep the zoning of these parcels as single-family residential. Page 11 of the 2040 plan lists the 10 smart growth principles that Lake Mills is to use as a guide for growth. I'd like to highlight the following. Number four, create walkable neighborhoods. Highway B's heavily traveled with no sidewalks, poor sightlines, and drivers often exceeding the posted speed limits. Number five, foster distinctive, attractive communities with a strong sense of place. Six, preserve farmland, open space, natural beauty, and critical environmental resources, especially near Rock Lake and Tyrenina Park. Seven, direct development towards existing communities. The surrounding properties are all single-family homes, farmland, and parks. And 10, encourage community and stakeholder collaboration in development decisions. We have shared with you that 624 people signed a petition requesting the city council to reject rezoning this parcel, and 356 people joined a Facebook group opposed to large multifamily development in this location. Tonight, you have the opportunity to carry out this 10th principle. We hope you'll listen to your constituents and maintain these parcels as single-family residential. The concerned citizens of Lake Mills are relying on the city council to choose a path forward that aligns closely with the smart growth principles. Thank you for listening.
Beth, can I ask you a real quick question? Sorry, it was Beth, right?
It is.
Okay. The petition that you're speaking of, is that, has that been shared with city administration? And I don't, I don't think I've received a copy of it, so I'm just asking if that's something that would--
We certainly can, yes.
That's what I would like to see.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Who's next?
My name is Tim Arand. I live at WS 7898, County Road B. I am a professor emeritus, Northern Illinois University, where I taught brand management in the university's graduate school. And within the brand management, we have something called place branding, or the branding of cities like Lake Mills. The Lake Mills brand is what identifies and differentiates it from other communities. It's our strong brand that makes people want to live here and pay a price premium to do so. Our brand is supported by brand elements such as Rock Lake, our parks, our commons, retail establishments, et cetera. In fact, every single touchpoint in this town somehow links Lake Mills and its brand. Our brand is our promise to our stakeholders. In essence, it is the soul of Lake Mills. I'm certain that Drake and Meaden Hunt have talked at length with city administrators regarding the undeniable importance of the Lake Mills brand. It can easily be argued that the single most important asset Lake Mills has is its brand, and virtually every decision you make has a direct impact on our brand. And every decision will either increase or decrease the Lake Mills brand value, each one. The decision regarding the development on County Road B is a big one. Tonight, we're engaging in the engagement of the city council with its stakeholders. Houghton and Stevens write in the book, City Branding, Drake, I'm sure you're very familiar with this book. They write in the book, and I'm quoting, "As you might imagine, there is a tremendous amount written on city branding. Equally, there is a weight of evidence that initiatives which do not engage, and in some cases alienate local stakeholders, are almost always destined to fail." So what would fail mean? A significant loss of investment, reduced property values, damage to local businesses, erosion of civic pride, disunity and conflict, wasted resources, loss of political capital, difficulty implementing future initiatives, negative media coverage, reduced tourism, et cetera. That's what fail means. The people in this room, the 624 people that signed that petition, voicing objection to the project, the 356 people who have joined the Concerned Citizens of Lake Mills, the people who have emailed you, called you, and written you, objecting to this project, are all your stakeholders, and their message should be very clear. We do not want the proposed apartment complex being built on County Road B. For the sake of Lake Mills, please don't alienate us. Again, initiatives like this, which alienate local stakeholders, are almost always destined to fail. I implore you, don't alienate us. Let's not fail. Thanks.
Perfect timing, three minutes on the dot, Tim. Thank you. Who's next? Would anyone else like to speak?
My name is Andrea Turk. I live at W 8001, County Highway B. That was a very interesting speech. The concern about building on that plot of land comes down to pure, one word, safety. There are so many things that can go wrong with building on that, that land from, across Tyrenina Park. The highway, all the people who use the highway, all the people from Lake Mills who use the highway, all the people who from the surrounding communities that use the highway, the visitors here in the summer, the summer people, the boats, the kids, the pets, the couples walking, the bicycles, that is a very busy highway. And I would hate to see someone get hurt because the traffic has gotten so large there. Part of what needs to be done of safety is also preserving the natural gifts that are in that area, the forestation, and the prairie, and the lake. These are all things that have to be considered in the decision of what decides to go there. I had one other thing to say, no, I can't find it. Oh, yeah. Let's collaborate for a safe solution for that plot of land. Let's all hear and listen to each other, and that will provide, we will find a way to find that, to make it safe on Highway County B. Thank you for the time.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak this evening?
My name is David Weir, N 6632, Woodfield Lane, Lake Mills. I come to speak about this 165-unit apartment complex, and I can only find one word for it, that is monstrosity. Monstrosity is defined as something, especially a building, that is very large and is considered unsightly. Suggested usage from the Oxford English Dictionary is "the shopping center, a multi-story monstrosity of raw concrete." Similar words to be used, according to the Oxford English Dictionary, is eyesore, horror, and blot on the landscape. It doesn't fit it any better. This is a monstrosity. As another speaker said, Lake Mills has a brand. Part of that brand is the jewel of Rock Lake. We need to preserve that Rock Lake, and this 165-unit apartment complex could destroy that Rock Lake. It could destroy that area. It's completely out of keeping with the other buildings. The first speaker talking about the fact that another builder is willing to come in and look at putting something similar to what's in the area, no rezoning needed, that's what we need to look for, or find other, more appropriate uses for it. The 2040 land plan was modified in May of 2018, I understand, to allow suggestion that in the future that this should be developed as multifamily. That's a planning document, and it's subject to revision. In fact, I understand that the council plans to do some revisions to it in 2025. It's an opportunity to cure mistakes or misjudgments that were made back in 2018 for this property, such as the plan also, I think, designates a 100-acre conservatory property as being multifamily, and the president has no intention of giving that up. And one thing that disturbed me at the planning commission meeting was a concern by some of the planning commission members that the current owner of the property, Mr. Durant, relied on that planning document, and that's not right. He purchased that property in August of 2017. In August of 2017, the master plan for that area was not multifamily. He got lucky. But putting it back where it was, back when he purchased it, not allowing this huge multifamily development, would simply put him in the same shoes as when he bought the property. It would not be an affront to Mr. Durant's rights. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak this evening? And Misty, please let me know if there's anyone online as well.
Hello?
Hi. My name is Kathy McGeorge. I live at W 7982, County Road B. That property has been in my family for nearly 50 years. As the property owner and a longtime member of Rock Lake Improvement Association, I'm also here to express my opposition to the proposed zoning change, the parcel located across from Tyrenina Park. My concerns are public safety and environmental safety. Regarding public safety, County Road B on the north end of Rock Lake is unsafe for pedestrians and bicycles. In fact, 10 years ago, the town of Lake Mills required property owners on County B to relocate our mailboxes across the street. That requirement was issued out of concern for our safety to cross the street to get our mail 10 years ago. Traffic has consistently increased since then, and the 30 mile-per-hour speed limit is neither obeyed by motorists nor enforced by the county. I took a 30-minute video last night of the traffic in front of my house. I counted 109 vehicles, many of which were obviously speeding. Now, consider peak traffic in that area occurs between May 1st and September 30th, when boat launch permits are required, when, while we're not crossing the street to get mail, we're crossing all day with friends, family, and neighbors to enjoy the lake, when residents are walking and biking on B, and the parks are filled with community members. It's not safe. Consider what adding multifamily units would do to increase the traffic volume. Consider that traffic volume doubles anytime there is a delay on I-94 between 89 and Madison, because the alternate route is B and BB. Please consider public safety before approving that zoning change. Regarding my environmental concerns, the fact that the proposed site is a historic landfill not licensed by DNR poses environmental risk. I have confirmed on the DNR RR sites map that the site is in fact a former dump. You will, or you have and will continue to hear concerns about contaminating soils, air, waterways, wells, and so on. Please also consider the potential to contaminate plants, wildlife, and the local ecosystem. Tyrenina Park was willed to the city by Reverend Updike with the intention to preserve nature and with the stipulation that it must be used for parkland. If the goal is to increase housing to serve the community, I would suggest seeking an area not across from that gifted park, not dangerously close to Rock Lake, and not on a former dump site. In closing, I urge you to consider the safety of our community and the beauty of the area and reject that zoning change. Thank you.
Thank you. And again, as Mr. Waters said earlier, the zoning amendment is not on tonight's agenda, so I just want to make sure that people are aware of that. Is there anyone else that would like to speak during public comment this evening?
Ms. Curler, there is one individual online.
Okay. Would they like to go ahead?
Sure. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Ellen Iverson. My siblings and I own our family farm, the Sander Farm, at West 7808, County Highway V. I'm sure many of you heard me speak at planning meetings, other city council meetings, and recently on the news, all in opposition of any form of development on that old tailored dump site. I'm sharing tonight to once again reiterate the concerns that many of us have with developments on that site. I feel I need to once again point out how dangerous and toxic it is, it can be, to uproot a dump. It's not only dangerous to that particular piece of property, but also to every single one of the surrounding properties, which includes mine, and several other peoples who are attending this meeting with the same concerns. Again, think about where these dangerous toxins are going to leak out to. People's wells can literally be destroyed by developing this property. Dangerous and many times fatal health conditions can occur from contaminated water and soil. And when this happens, that will all fall on all of you who are voting in favor of any form of development on this toxic site. So please think about that. Once again, I'll comment on how dangerous this location is in terms of traffic on Highway B. Bogus traffic studies were completed by Wangard. Please put more trust into traffic studies done by people who actually live in the area and witness this traffic every single day. Any development at that site would add, that would add more traffic to an already dangerous corner is only going to lead to accidents. Again, that will fall on all of you who are voting in favor of developing this site. Of course, a company that stands to make a lot of money is going to say that their development isn't going to cause any traffic problems or spread any kind of contamination. We need to be smarter here and think about these concerns. We've heard over and over again about how this development of this particular site is in line with this 2040 comprehensive plan and the future land use map, so therefore we need to look at this development here. But what actually is a future land use map? It's a concept map. That, that's it, a concept. It's simply the idea of what some company came up with. That's not saying that just because someone in doing, without doing much research of the area, thought that this property should be developed. That is absolutely, has to be developed. I think it's important for it to be stated at a public meeting like this, so everyone understands that this is not a "we have to do this" situation. I can also point out that there's at least four mistakes on that map, and like somebody also stated earlier, that that plan, if my understanding is, it will be revisited during the 2025 year, so I'm hoping that these mistakes are corrected. I also understand that Mr. and now Mrs. Durant have offered to sell the property to the city, and I hope that when you all discuss this in closed session tonight, that you think about all the concerns that many of the citizens of both the city and the town of Lake Mills are sharing tonight and at past meetings. I urge you not to vote to rezone this property for a huge multifamily development. I urge you not to buy this property just to sell it to a company that's going to develop it. Consider other options about that property that would preserve open space, natural beauty, and critical environmental resources, all of which--
Ellen, that's three minutes, if you could please wrap up.
Yep, all of that is what is stated in the City of the Lake Mills Comprehensive Plan. Please just consider other options, like this newly presented compromise the first speaker mentioned. Thank you.
Thank you. Misty, was there anyone else online?
Nobody else that typed in their information, no.
Okay, was there anyone else here in the room tonight? Okay, please step up.
So I'll sign in here after I get done here. My name is Jeff Johns. I live at 508 Dodge Court, right off of Ferry. And my-- And my background for the last five years for the county, I was on the Parks Committee along with some other committees there. And I moved over here recently and I left the county board at that time because I lost my district. So I want to put something positive out there about this piece of property. Being on the Parks Committee and of course I've been familiar with all the county parks in the entire Jefferson County area, including the ones by the lake here. So you have the opportunity to do something positive with this piece of property. No development, no worries about the landfill, no concerns about that much traffic, and that's to make it a dog park. We run a dog park over off of 26. It's very, very well maintained. It's safe for everybody in the community. On Dodge Court and on Ferry, there's always a constant parade of folks walking their dogs. Dog parks are not for walking dogs. Dog parks are letting dogs run. And when dogs run, they get their exercise. So consider a dog park as something that the city could put there with annual dues for every dog that is registered to go there and you would have a constant stream of income. It would not be that much to cover that piece of property, but what could you, how could you zone that so that it's not, you can, it's almost a write-off because you're offering a public service for that piece of property? So just kind of consider a positive use for that piece of property is a nice place. And I know a lot of my neighbors have very large dogs and walking your dog in the dog park, you just watch them go. You can register, I did talk to, of course, I know Kevin Weisman for the county who runs the dog park up on 26. I talked to Eric down here a couple of times about other issues that are positive for the city and I think this would be a great opportunity for the city council to put something like this available for all the citizens of Lake Mills. It's an enhancement for the branding of this city. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Any questions?
Nope, thank you. Anyone else would like to speak tonight? If there are others after this, Cal, please feel free to move forward ahead of time just to kind of keep things moving. Thanks.
Hi, thank you for having me speak today. My name is Lynn Pure. I live in N. 6710 Woodfield Lane in Lake Mills. So there was a letter from Mr. Durant actually that addresses, he says, quote, "Development under this current zoning single family is not financially viable for anyone, would inconsistent with the comprehensive plan and only be feasible way for a property to be cleaned up is to be and is redeveloped and changed the zoning." I realize we're not talking about the zoning today. What I really wanted to talk about is this whole concept of a brownfield site, which is a contaminated site. So when somebody buys, purposely buys and knows that the property is contaminated and they don't have the time or the financial resources, this is really not a good reason for a potential rezone. It's also, you know, he quotes that anyone but Vanguard could actually afford to do stuff. That's predisposing that company for coming in and actually doing the work that he doesn't want to do. There is an opportunity, the DNR has a remediation and redevelopment department which offers help and resources to the owners of brownfields to clean up the property. Various financial resources are available to clean up contaminated properties for redevelopment. The Environmental Protection Agency, for example, provides a $200,000 grant to private owners of a brownfield site as well as local governments who own brownfield sites. The owners are responsible for paying 20% with that grant and the EPA and the DNR help to do the cleanup. They would like to help cities redevelop brownfields because it supports smart growth. Planting on top of brownfield sites is one cost-effective way of cleaning them up. This process is called phyto remediation. It uses plants' ability to concentrate elements and compounds from the environment through their root systems to detoxify various compounds. One way to do this is to plant native plants, restoring the wetland and the savanna to Oakland biome. As such, we're asking that the city council consider purchasing the brownfield site, this is Mr. Durant's brownfield site, and with the financial resources available, cleaning up the property with its current zoning and turning it into a park, like a dog park or a local park for walking and keeping our area beautiful. This is absolutely financially feasible because the planting would go on top of it. More about the rezoning, which you have already said this is not on. So again, there are opportunities to clean that site, to beautifying the site with natural plants and that have the ability to absorb that toxin. We've talked about a number of things such as the traffic, the safety of people if there were such a large development there. That would be really difficult and of course there's no opportunity to widen the road to allow even for a turn lane. So thank you for hearing us out this evening and we hope you take it into consideration to turn this into a beautiful spot. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. Anyone else who would like to speak during public comment this evening?
Has everyone been signing in? Should I sign in?
Yes, please. Or you can go ahead and speak and then sign in if you like.
I'm not speaking about the apartment complex. Is that all right?
Okay. It is.
Good.
But first tell us your name and address, please.
Hi, my name is John Thody and I'm speaking here on behalf of the Rock Lake Improvement Association. I'm a board member of the association and there's two issues that we would like to discuss this evening. The first is we'd like to thank the city for its use with brining equipment on the streets that drain towards Rock Lake. The use of this technology helps reduce the amount of chloride that can run off into the lake. Once road salt or chloride is added to Rock Lake, it's never reduced or removed. Brining equipment requires an investment by the city in education, equipment, and process. We applaud and appreciate the effort and hope the city will continue to look for ways to reduce chlorine's, chloride's impact on Rock Lake. So thank you for doing that. I noticed it on the streets this year. It looks like it's also been effective and who's ever doing it seems to know what they're doing to some degree because I know it's a difficult process to manage. Secondly, Rock Lake Improvement Association supports Ms. Schmager's three-decade-long lake level analysis and we would encourage the city to submit a request to the DNR to revise Rock Lake's water level order to bring the WLO in line with her recommendations. The revised order would permit a greater retention of spring precipitation to increase the likelihood of achieving maximum summer recreation levels. The revision should also include a more gradual release of the water to fall and winter levels. The proposed changes would more closely mirror historic lake level management practices and would be aligned with the future weather trends forecasted by Wisconsin State Climatology Office. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. We can send you a copy of these. We'll send the council a copy of this statement. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you, John. Anyone else would like to speak tonight? Anyone else online? Okay, seeing none, we will close public comment for this evening. Thank you, everyone. Okay, next item on our agenda is the City Manager's Report and we have a number of our usual monthly financial statements. Are there any, Drake, anything you would like to add or are there any questions from council members?
Any questions? I'm happy to try and answer them.
Try. Looks like Greg's got some.
I did have one. I'll turn on my mic. And please be, you're more than welcome to stay tonight. You don't have to leave. My question was on the Public Works in the budget, the general funds, there was a roughly a half million dollar capital expenditure for other projects. That's on page 14. Do you know what that half million was for? I don't recall what that was all about.
Say again which document that was, Greg, that you were?
It was in the general fund.
In the check register?
Let me pull that up. The general fund check register or the financial, it was in the financial statement.
Okay.
And you go to page 14. I can get the exact amount here.
Microphone.
Was the amount?
It's under the Public Works Other Projects.
513,156 and 99 cents.
If you can be patient, I'll look it up. I gotta sign back into my accounting software. I got kicked out.
No problem. Thank you.
Public Works Other Project.
Is that the one?
Yes.
Okay.
It was just, I wasn't sure what that was and just kind of wanted to get an update on that.
I believe this is the finishing of the TAP grant.
Okay.
Let me, yeah.
Why don't you look that up and report back?
Yep.
Thank you.
Also on that document, I have a question and a compliment. So I'll start with the compliment. I was very impressed to see that we're earning significant amount of revenue from interest, which shows how well Sam is moving money around and optimizing, you know, when we receive funds in and we don't need to spend them right away. So I just want to compliment you and your team, Sam, for that and thank you for doing that. And I know we may not always be every year, might not always earn that much interest, but it's good that we can kind of optimize that when the opportunities present itself. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
I was curious on a more general level for this December statement, are there, is it possible that there will be some, you know, tweaks and final edits? So this may not be sort of like our final, final.
Correct. It is the unaudited December financials. So our auditor was actually in this week for prelim stuff, getting some documents and things that they need for the audit. They'll be back in March for three to four days and then I will get final journal entries which will tweak, as you put it, the final financial statement.
Just final updates.
We have not yet, I don't, we haven't closed out 2024 yet. So there's still invoices being paid.
Might be some pending bills and things like that. Yeah, I noticed in particular under federal, under federal and state revenue, we haven't gotten all of our federal public safety grant yet. I'm not sure why that is, but, so I can see where there might be some things that would shift once the final stuff comes through. Okay. Sorry, I took your attention away from looking up the answer to Greg's question.
I'm trying to do my multi-factor. Don't get him.
Do you want the answer now or do you want her to just follow up with you?
She can follow up if that's okay.
I am 99% sure it's the TAP grant, but I will just shoot everybody an email.
Sounds great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments on the documents for the City Manager's Report? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to council business. So our first item is Letter A, which is Resolution 25-02 related to releasing financial guarantee. Misty, would you read that resolution title for us, please?
Lady Council, Resolution 25-02, Final Release of Financial Guarantee, Summer Ridge Stacked Flats.
I move to approve 25-02, Final Release of Financial Guarantee, the Summer Ridge Stacked Flats.
Second. Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Quinnow, seconded by Ms. Schmager. Staff?
Projects being closed out. Public infrastructure has been accepted. Warranty periods have expired. The city has no use for the financial guarantee anymore and so this is the final release and we'll close out the project.
And we have a recommendation letter from our city engineer to that effect. Any questions or comments from council members?
Looks pretty straightforward. I think we move on.
All right, seeing none, can we have a roll call vote, please, on Resolution 25-02?
Ms. Schmager?
Aye.
Ms. Quinnow?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. Our next item is Resolution 25-03 regarding alcohol consumption in Wallace Park for a special event. Could you read that one for us, Misty?
City Council, Resolution 25-03, Permitting Possession and Consumption of Alcohol in Wallace Park for the 2025 Knickerbocker Festival.
Thank you. Would someone like to make a motion?
I will move to approve Resolution 25-03, Permitting Possession and Consumption of Alcohol in Wallace Park for the 2025 Knickerbocker Festival.
Second. Okay, motion by Ms. Schmager, seconded by Ms. Quinnow. Staff?
Alcohol is prohibited in Wallace Park without special allowance from the city council. Wallace Park is designated as a backup location for some of the Knickerbocker festival activities. If you recall, last year, the weather didn't cooperate and so some of the activities they had planned for the lake and beach areas were not able to take place. So this allows for the possession and consumption, but does not allow for the sale of alcohol in Wallace Park during the special event of Knickerbocker Festival.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. So I'll ask a question. Does that mean basically people can bring their own, but nothing can be sold on site?
It can be brought on, it can be given away. There can't be a transaction.
Got it. Got it. Okay.
Right, Misty?
That is correct.
Okay. Any questions or discussion? Mary?
Well, I know we allow alcohol consumption for our town and country days in the summer. Have we allowed this before and have we had any issues? Because I don't recall Wallace Park being a, having to be a backup plan for the, because for the most part, the lake has usually been frozen. But did we allow it last year and did everything go?
Alcohol was not permitted last year. There wasn't time after the decision had been made to use it as a backup. There was not a city council meeting to have it on the agenda. So I don't believe we've done it for Knickerbocker before. I would not be able to speak to whether there's been at any time in Wallace Park's history if there's ever been a request for alcohol consumption. It's possible, but it's not a regular occurrence, certainly not during my two and a half years.
Okay. Thanks. Any other questions or discussion? Okay, seeing none, may we please have a roll call vote on Resolution 25-03?
Ms. Quinnow?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Ms. Schmager?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
Okay, next item is Resolution 25-04 regarding official intent to reimburse expenditures from proceeds of borrowing. Misty, would you read that one for us?
City Council, Resolution 25-04, Resolution Declaring Official Intent to Reimburse Expenditures From Proceeds of Borrowing.
Move to approve Resolution 25-04.
Second.
Second.
Sorry, Steve, I think Mary beat you to it. So we have a motion by Mr. Waters, seconded by Ms. Schmager. Staff?
This is an annual approval. If you recall, you need, we need to have a reimbursement resolution on file if we, to reimburse ourselves for any costs we incur. That'll later be refunded essentially to the general fund by the borrower when we do it. So we incur expenses prior to doing our borrowing typically in the summer. This allows us to reimburse ourselves from those proceeds.
Okay. And I think we do this pretty much every year, right? Yeah. Any questions or discussion on this one? Okay, seeing none, we have a roll call, please, on Resolution 25-04.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Ms. Schmager?
Aye.
Ms. Quinnow?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. Motion passes five zero.
Thank you. Next item is Resolution 25-05, Regarding Requesting an Amendment to the Rock Lake Water Level Order. So Misty, would you read that title for us?
City Council, Resolution 25-05, Directing the City Manager to Formally Request an Amendment to the Rock Lake Water Level Order from the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources.
Thank you. So before we do a motion on this one, I think it would be helpful for us to have the background. And I wanted to, Mary is kinda taking the lead in preparing this, but I wanted to kick it off by just reminding us all of what we have done related to Rock Lake water levels in the last couple of years. I was looking back through records. So starting in about the spring of 2023, we were regularly receiving citizen concerns about low summer water levels. In June of 2023, the council referred the issue to the Joint Rock Lake Committee, asked them to evaluate data, make some policy recommendations. And in October of 2023, we got recommendations from Joint Rock Lake Committee, as well as Rock Lake Improvement Association. And the city staff also presented data on the water, water level elevations from our current dam. I don't know the timing of this, but sometime during that same 2023, we had the dam inspected. Our operating software was assessed and calibrated, so I didn't have dates, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, Drake, but I think that was right in that same time period. And so then based on all the discussions that we had there, last year, February, we adopted an updated dam management policy. So you might remember that the key thing there was to, that we directed our staff to operate the dam at the maximum water level within each range, do more frequent inspections, operate in the automatic mode rather than manual mode. And then I think the programming software was set to adjust the, adjust in response to water levels every 30 minutes rather than every hour as it had been before. So all of those changes were things that did not require an amendment to the water level. So I, thanks, everybody, for listening to me. I had to go back through and look at the history myself just to remember where, how did, how did we get to where we are here? And the last thing that we've done as a council then was in May of last year, where we authorized some funds to conduct survey work associated with the wetland plant study at the south basin of the lake. And so I know that Jefferson County and DNR staff did a lot of the field work out there and then we funded the, the surveying associated with that. Am I, did I miss any, like, at least high-level items of the things that we've done? Okay, so that's kind of the background that brought us here to today. And I don't know, Drake, do we have the study results from DNR yet or?
Yeah. So we won't, I don't know how to word this. We won't receive, at some point, we'll receive what they identified, the plant communities and the areas that the survey identified. But what the, essentially what that step is, is it provides the DNR with the data that they use to evaluate a water level order change. And so it's necessary, it was a necessary step if the city council ever wanted, or anyone, I suppose, wanted to request a water level order change. The county did, for the DNR, complete an inundation map that showed how water levels would affect the communities that were surveyed. So that was another piece that the county sent. So they're using that survey data that we use to identify plant communities, for the most part. And then you, we'll use that to evaluate again, whatever request is against and how it impacts these communities of interest. So we, we can certainly, we will certainly receive the inundation map and other information. It would also be, there are also the findings of fact that gets published if you do request a water level order change from the DNR. So they will provide reasoning and things of that nature. That certainly will be informed by the information that we provided them. So it was necessary to provide this to the DNR so that they could evaluate it if requested, but it's not something that they say, after looking at this data, they're gonna give you a thumbs up or a thumbs down as to whether you should pursue a water level.
Or even that they wouldn't be sending us a study result or something like that. Yeah, but they'll use that information if we or someone else petitions for a change. Okay. All right, thanks. So, and as I mentioned before, Mary has put a lot of time and effort into analyzing data and proposing this resolution. So I just wanted to give us all a refresher on, you know, what we've done up to this point. And then I guess I'll turn it over to you, Mary.
Well, thank you, Lisa. First of all-
Good question, Mary.
Oh, yeah.
Is your presentation in alignment with the resolution that's before us? Or is it different?
It is in line with the, is in line with the resolution. It essentially is changing, our recommendation is changing the transitions only, not the levels of the water. So the, the levels, the minimums and maximums are, the recommendation is not to change those at all. It's just to change the way we manage the transitions in the spring and the fall. But it aligns with this, I actually, Drake, I wanna thank Drake for actually drafting the memo and formulating this chart that goes along with the exhibits for the DNR.
So I met with Mary and then draft, and then also connected with the DNR on what is required if you submit a water level order. And that letter that's attached is what gets sent to the DNR. And I made sure that the letter and the resolution were in line with what you're gonna be hearing tonight as far as a proposal for what that water level order change would be. Thank you.
Great.
So I'm gonna start, first of all, with an apology to my council, council colleagues. We have a working agreement to have all of our materials in place on Friday when the deck gets sent out. And I received some great, wise advice that perhaps my slides were a tad too high level. And I have, I reconsidered my thoughts and resubmitted some materials today to Misty. So I apologize they came to in the middle of the afternoon. As a standalone, they may not have been helpful anyway, so I'm gonna walk through the materials. But I wanted to let you know that I failed to stand up to our working agreement to have our materials in advance. So I wanna start off with that. I started off, many of you probably may or may not know, but I started off working on analyzing Rock Lake's water level data back in 2021 as a citizen. And so a lot of my work, even up into the last, like, two weeks, I've been wearing the hat of a citizen. First of all, learning from, for myself, because the 2021 water levels were low and it just caused, got my science and mind going on wondering what had transpired. And then in 2023, again, when the water levels did not meet, meet summer minimums, I was asked to, to help support analyses and the Joint Rock Lake Committee had reached out through our LIA and asked for some assistance in analyzing the water levels. So I have been supporting Joint Rock Lake Committees since, so a lot of their data in 2023, I was supporting and supplying to them. And I, and I, and I was worried about a lot of angst, and as you know, there were over 300 citizens signing a petition, angst about the dam being the problem. And the dam is one part of a system. There's the, there's the water levels, there's interpretation of the water level, there could be groundwater issues, and there is the dam. But wanted to make sure that, you know, all things were thought through as it related to the water level. And so I'm going to go through some history in a minute that talks about, that the dam itself, because I, Lisa, you had mentioned a lot of different things that have transpired. There is the new dam management policy, there are new wear maintenance protocols I know that were put into place, and simplification of the wear and water programming, elevation programming. So there was a lot done on the dam that gives, I think, me a lot more confidence. I think it was giving a lot of people confidence that the, the machine itself had been kind of working along as we had expected. But there were still concerns about the changes in the water level that I think were unanswered. The original water level order was issued actually in 1926, so this is kind of interesting. I think, Greg, you like history sometimes, I've learned. And I think our structure is very similar, actually, to the one that was defined in 1982. So it's been a while. And one of the aspects of the water level order, which we'll talk about, which is why I think a change is important today, is that as it's written, it's difficult to achieve because we have step, high step changes. And it is really open to interpretation. And I'll show some examples where we, we all can be better at ensuring that we have it very clearly defined so that as we all, you know, roles turn over, you know, we, we end, we end up with new players at the table, that it's extremely clear what is intended and why. And so I've, I started the discussion with Erin Cox from the DNR regarding my, my historical findings. And I'm gonna walk you through what I shared with, with Erin. And then Erin invited me to share with her colleagues. And so I did present this information, again, wearing my, starting with my citizen hat on Friday of last week. And Erin really, the two of us together, thought Drake really needed to quickly get in the fold in that the city had been very supportive of the conversations in the past of the water level order and really making sure that the dam management was top-notch and we had the right way of managing, et cetera. And so quickly, city council hat came on. And so I am presenting to you kind of the findings and the recommendation in more detail today. So I'm gonna start with, I kinda call it, what I've uncovered is that what was written on paper is not how we've practiced the management of the water over decades and decades. And so I think that's really important because I think if you think of anything you do in life, when you try to describe what you do and someone watches what you do, it often is two different things. And so I'm, this here, I'm gonna start with is the spring. And in the spring, this is the wear, or the, I put, I'm calling it the wear, but I can, I'll call it the new dam interchangeably to try to keep it clear. This is the spring transition time period. So around March 15th, actually, on average, it's around March 15th, March 25th, the ice comes off. And the wear starts kicking in to manage our spring water levels. And you'll notice in yellow is 2021, that goes really crazy. And that was determined back in the day, we had an, we had a problem, we had something stuck in there and we didn't quite catch the mechanism in time. And so you'll notice moving forward, I won't have 2021 in the wear data when I do some overlays. But we have been quite variable. There've been two years we never made it to summer minimums. That was 21 and 23, which were the years I had mentioned. And we make it in various ways over time, depending on how we've approached coming into each of the seasons. So now there's, the next slide, please, is the starting of the history lesson. Dan and Drake know I spent some time photocopying the ledgers and that was a really fun exercise. They're like mini little books that are like somebody's private diary. And it was handwritten capture of water level, levels not every day, and then often commentary. Someone got a, someone got a three-point buck, someone, you know, one inch of rain, super dry. And so it was very interesting and some of it was insightful regarding any kind of memo they may have received from the DNR regarding an element such as, hey, please keep an eye on X because we, we've heard people don't like it. Like ice heave was, was an example in the 90s. So this chart is 1990 to 2006. And I will share with you, I stopped analyzing the data for a while because I was struggling to find any data in the, in the 2000 arena. And I was able to uncover from the DNR, they had copies of the ledger from 2000 to 2006. So I, I kinda pulled the study back out this past fall. And, and what I've drawn up here is the spring data. And in the gray dots are all 1990 through 1994. Because when I started looking at the information, the early 90s, we didn't draw down, we drew down a little bit in the winter, but we rode pretty high all year round. And there was a memo that came out and a significant change that, starting in 1995, you'll notice the color dots are lower. So the color dots are what I want you to draw your eye to. Those are the 1995 through 2006. I also have some additional data I received from Colton Hutchinson from Jefferson County Land and Water Conservation. And when you overlay his data, it's, he was, he was capturing it for a different reason. So I, it's a different data source, but it is also what aligns with this information. The data points all fall in the same kind of band. So if I, yes.
Mary, do you mind if we ask questions?
Oh, sure.
As you go? Or if you're gonna answer later, then just tell us.
Okay.
I was curious, when you mentioned there was some other notations in the ledgers, and then looking at those gray dots that are pretty high, was there anything in the ledgers to indicate that there were any complaints came in that the water level was high?
Yeah, there were complaints in the early 90s. That was the ice heave.
Okay.
Some ice damage. And so the, the memo came out to say, hey, please, please ensure you start coming down. Yeah. And I found that the notes were, I mean, pretty precise in some way, but not in others. There was a lot of, just to note, why get a new, a new dam, a lot of boards getting, stuff getting stuck in the boards. I mean, it was not a, it sounded like and read like a very challenging system. And it continued, I'm sure, over time. Because even in the late 2000s, you see, see some notes about, you know, wow, this, we could really use an upgrade, an upgrade. So the next slide, please. I just drew a circle around this bottom layer of the water level order. And the conclusion that I'm drawing is that we didn't run here. We started capturing spring rains in all years, except you see a few little dots down starting in 1997. They're kind of at the top left of that circle, but you see very quickly, we are starting to rise up to summer minimum. And so that was just an observation that are in practice for decades. We never really ran low in this particular area. We started to capture spring rains consistently. So the next slide, please. So I pulled on my, put my head, statistics hat on and ran regression on all of that data just to see is there a rise? Now, this isn't a great fit if anybody's gonna start picking my numbers apart. It's not a really great fit because there's a lot of variability and these numbers are really wideband. But you can see that we start low, like, the max of the winter, and we do have a gradual increase up. So that, that dash line there is a statistical fit. Now, if, if I were to, because the fit's so low, I wouldn't, I wouldn't use this particular line to actually suggest that, how we should manage on this line. But it does show a definite increase, starting in the winter and, and moving up towards summer levels. And you have to remember, all of the spring relies on Mother Nature. So even if, so the water level order, as Drake and has articulated, the optimum would be increase the maximum by .3 inches per day to get from winter max to summer. But that's only if you have the rain. So this is not a, an easy, like, it's isn't straight mathematical equation that will help this part of the water level order. It's going to be a band that's going to, and I'm gonna have you go to the next slide, please. This is a depiction of a band that I propose. And if you overlay it, it looks very similar to the 2022 actual wear data. It's, it's one of the gray lines, but it's, it's the one that kind of rides in the center. But if you can, we can pull the water, start gently pulling the water up and capturing it. And you have a maximum to avoid any kind of extreme flooding, is to manage, have a maximum, but allow the water to gradually rise. And it might not be a straight line, it may be, you might get a rise and then it flattens out a little bit because the water here really depends on, on rain and runoff. But it would to just gradually increase and start to capture those rains once ice is off, is the recommendation. Again, this is not changing the water levels, so the max and min stay is just changing the transition between the different levels.
Can I ask a question?
So question on spring.
To that point where you have the red lines and you're saying that's what you would propose is the transition, I would note, though, that those red lines are completely outside the spring range. So I mean, it would, wouldn't it, in effect, sort of alter the spring max and min?
Oh, that becomes almost the new max and min. The red line becomes your max and min for the spring.
So it would change the water level order? That, I guess that's what I'm kind of trying to get, I wanna make sure we're being clear about.
Thank you. Yes, it'd be, it'd be changing the water level, yeah. It, it, the current water level order is a, it's a step. So we can't achieve, on May 2nd, we can't go from- water level order is a, it's a step. So we can't achieve, on May 2nd, we can't go from the max of the spring to the min of the summer. So it's just taking, and I guess it would be changing that band, that center max would change to like gradients or, or a small set of steps, Lisa. That's a good point. Yeah. And I guess maybe because I've been looking at this, my mind is saying, we've never been there. So I, in my mind, we haven't had that band in practice. So, but it is essentially removing that, that straight line and, and allowing the water to rise in a, in more of a banned pattern instead of like a flat, a flat line.
So the difference between our current order and what you're suggesting is that our current order will allow us to capture all the rain from spring breakup till we hit our summer max, basically. Where here, we're doing it in more of a gauged.
Well, here we're do, here we're doing it, we're suppressing it until May 1st. And then we open the gate and allow whatever water to rise. And this is, you start allowing it to rise along the way like we had in the past so that you gain water from ice off to summer max. But having, so there was a concern from the DNR regarding extreme, like when we have a real flash flood rain, you want to be able to control, if you have a high, heavy, I'm not making this up, four inch downpour, you might rise way too fast and cause disturbance that's not desired. And so having a maximum amount, having a maximum amount where the weir would say, oh no, you're still sitting in April. And if you're on that red, top red line as an example, and we, and we'd have to work together with the DNR to ensure that they're comfortable with ice off because that date changes. So this is a conversation starter that the DNR is interested in, can, based on my conversation appears, is open and encouraged us to move forward with a formal request. So we can actually have a dialogue around how would you mitigate any flash water events? And can, how would the weir be able to handle making that happen? I mean, it is a, I think based on what I know of it and what Eric has, has described, it could be programmed to make, ensure that if we had a really strong rain, we don't end up with issues, flooding issues. And this is that inundation project that Patricia Sisro and her team are going to be working on to help make sure we understand what areas might be prone to something like that. So that we can ensure that we have this, the weir mitigates any of those risks.
But I don't think we're looking at flooding because our, our max is still below flood level.
Not necessarily, not flooding as far as like damage to property type of flooding. There are, there are plant communities throughout Rock Lake that interact with water differently. And so if, one, one thing the DNR will look at is, will any change in the water level order cause one of these communities to be inundated with water too soon?
Yep.
And so that, that, when we're talking about flooding these areas, it's, it's these areas that at some point will be inundated with water, but it's when they are inundated. And if that when is too early, is there damage to that community? So that's one of the, one of the factors the DNR is evaluating when this is going on. So instead of what this is showing you is that each day that maximum gets a little higher, but it's over a gradual period of time until you get to the summer maximum in summer. And so there's still, you may not capture 100% of spring rainfall, right? Because you could be, you could have a day where your max is, you're at the max already and you get more rain that day. The dam is going to allow that water to run through until the next day when it rises another 0.3 inches. So I can't, I can't tell you, it's, the DNR is going to have to tell you whether or not there is an adverse impact. That's their responsibility in evaluating the water level order. This is essentially showing you a path to perhaps obtain summer maximum on the date that summer maximum becomes allowed under the water level order.
So we're not talking about property damage. We're talking about ecological?
Yep. Yep.
Issues. Okay.
Mm-hmm.
And, and the conversation with the DNR includes looking at, is it, does it start at ice off? There was a comment about April 1st, I think, being an important date for a particular type of amphibian. And so in the, in the spirit, it's in, in the spirit of this request, the DNR may suggest, well, perhaps ice off isn't where we would like you to start. We'll start gathering spring rains, but it'll be after April 1st, if that's a particular date that's important for a species that they're worried about. And I don't know if that inundation map or the, the collaboration between the DNR colleagues will, what they will uncover. But it is, it is, the request is to gather spring rains and it's how can we collectively, collaboratively together do it? So it's in the best fashion for us to achieve summer levels while also balancing and managing the ecosystem and the lake. Rather than suppressing the water, which we haven't done. This, the first time we ever started suppressing and working in, I call it suppressing, but keeping low levels in that one DNR band, it was when, when we started with the new dam. We've, we just historically have never had experience down in that level. And so it's just to get our lake back to the level where we've been performing for, for the history prior to the, to the new dam.
Yeah. I guess just to clarify for you, right, you're making, if, if you approve the resolution tonight, you're making a suggestion to the DNR. You're saying, here's an idea that we, that accomplishes some goal of the city council that you're interested in the DNR entertaining. But the DNR will set the water level order and it can be what you asked for, it can be some of what you asked for, it can be none of what you asked for and something else. So they're evaluating this against their, their, you know, all of the, you know, recreation, environmental. They now require a, they have an economist at the DNR and they now require an economic impact analysis to be done before changing water level orders. So there's all these pieces. If you've ever heard Erin speak, she talks about, you know, she's the hub and then there's spokes off of that and it all comes back to her with recommendations and analysis. You know, the fish, you know, the fishery, the fishing communities, the amphibians, the plants, the recreational aspects, the economic impact. So that, you're not, you don't have to know the answers to all of those things before you make a request. They are evaluating your request against all of those things and deciding if they want to change it at all, if they, basically what, how they're going to regulate us.
So I did see some, or some staff comment, not comments, but some staff, some letters from DNR staff, I should say, in the last couple of days. Have they reviewed this and have they provided any comment?
Only that they said that in order to basically, we've gone as far as we can without making a formal request. There's really no more conversations. There's no more analysis. There's no more, there's nothing else to do besides make a request to determine if the DNR is going to take some sort of action. So that's basically where we're at now. So they've told us, you've done, you've provided us with the data. If you approve, that you've come up with what you would like to see, you gotta ask us now. You have to formally submit something to us. Otherwise, this just ends here and there's nothing, there's nothing more to be done.
So is it fair to say that this proposal's maybe a more friendly, softer approach than what our current proposal is?
If, if you're, if I were to characterize it, I would say it allows, it allows you with a, it allows for a gradual, a gradual increase, a spring rise, a gradual increase from the start of spring to the start of summer that provides the possibility that the summer maximum will be near or hit or achieved on the date that the summer maximum is, is allowed. And then the inverse in the fall, that we can start the fall drawdown on the date of fall. Right now, we must achieve the fall level by the date of fall, under the interpretation of the water level order. So start on that date and lower it a little bit each day to allow for a longer time period, an easier, a less stark change for peers and other implements to be taken off of the lake for end of season. So we're not, right now, after Labor Day, we're taking about seven to eight days and we're lowering it each day. So on September 15th, we're at the fall level. We announced that. And so that gives you, that gives a week. That's so the inverse would allow a longer time period.
And I know you have a bunch of fall data that you want to show us.
Can I move into the fall? That was a great summary and great lead in. Thank you, Drake. Because let's go to, let's move to fall and then I'll grab some more questions. I think fall is going to be a similar story. Thank you. I'll go to one, the next one. So fall, I'm going to start with, I'm starting a little, a little different place on this particular slide. This is all of our weir performance data. And I put 2024 in red to, to highlight the point that this was an interpretation change and the first time ever in the history of Rock Lake that we actually started drawing the water down this early. And so it was just a point to show that it's really important that wherever we land, we actually have very clear expectations. Because history, you'll see in a moment, and even the weir have been much close, more closely related than we were last year by moving it up a week. And so this is just showing that last year was an anomaly. And I was kind of encouraging and hoping that we would get back to our, our best practice, which is starting the draw on the 15th of September. So if we go to the next slide, because then I'll get back to the weir data in a second. This is the history and I plotted it in the same fashion. The gray dots are early 2000, early 1990s. And the colored dots are 1996. And this does include some of the data, this particular visual from Colton Hutchinson. I didn't have as much fall data, just in general, so I just pulled them all together. And so you'll see, we, we start up in the summer level and we start to draw down in the fall. So it looks great. So the next page, please. Here it is overlined, overlaid with the weir information. So you'll see how our, our weir, other than a few 21, 22, and 23 are the yellow years. We had the two years, 21 and 23, that were low and 22 had this high rise going. That was also an anomaly. But you can see, the years that are right on the money are, we have it programmed where we just start on the 15th and we bring her down pretty, pretty steadily, reaching fall, this fall max period. But if, you can turn the next slide, please. I drew this little arrow in here because you'll see there's a, there's a definite gap between the time periods. We actually are running faster and sooner with the weir than we had in past history. We were slower and longer. So I did an analysis on this on that next slide, please. This is where I get, it's getting late. Is everyone holding with me on my statistics? So this is the, I think, the, the big important slide for the fall. This is all ledger data and it is pretty consistent. We start September 15th, 16th, we start drawing down, even with the ledger data. And it was noted in the ledgers very distinctly, usually between the 15th and 18th is when it seemed to be like a hard, let's, let's start working, get, get the water down. The, the weir reduces at a rate fast enough that we achieve max on September 21st. And it, we lose water at about .6 inches per day. Where prior to the new dam, we were running much slower and longer. So we achieved our fall max around October 15th. And we're running at a rate about .14 inches of water a day. And then I included some of that data I had mentioned on the next slide that was from Colton. Because I, I didn't, my fall data was a little thin. And here's a few outliers here, but you're going to see the same or similar conclusion. We're running about, you know, the weir is three times faster water release than the board system. And this one here, we achieved the max around October 10th. So depending on which data set you use, it's somewhere early October, we've been achieving the max of the fall level. And the weir has brought us much faster and much sooner. So that's a difference of about 20, 20 days, 20, 25 days earlier, we've been reaching fall max. So the conversation here was interesting. And so if you go to the next slide, please. Again, the recommendation is just to return to historic water level management. So we have decades of, of slower and softer, kinder water release, if you will. There was a memo that recently was shared from the year, from the DNR of March of 2000 that stated more natural water flow to Rock Creek is preferred. So this gives us a more natural water flow instead of a higher rate, higher discharge that we had in, that we currently have. And the only thing I could add is that we had a, an interesting conversation, again, about the amphibians. And there was a date that was thrown down of October 1st. And so Rory, one of our DNR colleagues, said she knows that October 1st is kind of a date that's been selected for, she used a turtle as an example, I think it was a blending turtle. And said that she'd be open for discussion. She says, you know, October 6th, 10th, it might be something that would be doable. Some of the turtle is water temperature related, more so than depth, this depth or like a decrease, like, you know, water movement kind of. She just said they were choosing a date so that the water stops moving so that the turtles have like their place to go. So the water's still not coming down. And so they're, again, a part of a conversation, the rate would change if the DNR says it should be October 6th. Or if they say, no, we're going to stay with October 31st, which is what it is now. It would change the rate by which we would reduce the water. So again, this is concept window that's drawn based on just, you know, kind of my initial analysis and proposal. But it would require a dish towards how we had been managing versus mimicking what the paper actually suggests. That's my, my thoughts, anyway.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution 25-5?
Second. We have motion by Mr. Waters, seconded by Ms. Quednow. Let's move to discussion then.
I'll add just a few things if I may.
Yes, please.
If you remember at the time of the dam management policy that we were adopted, we did discuss gradual increases and decreases at the time. And it was something that the council was somewhat interested in. We did confirm with the DNR that under the current water level order, it's not an acceptable operation of the dam under their, under their interpretation of it. So that's when we realized, we had to meet by the 15th. Because if you get to the 15th and you're over and you start gradually drawing down, that was considered not actively trying to achieve the maximum of the water level order. And then similar to the spring is that you couldn't retain water in preparation for the summer level, no matter, you know, how near it may be. Other, other point, you'll see there's a $500 application fee. I know it's not large. That does get refunded to the city if the, the application doesn't go the way that the city was asking. So it comes back. And then just, you know, stat, city staff has no expertise to offer you on really any aspect of evaluating what Rock Lake water levels should be. So my role here is to let you know just what could happen, right? The, the DNR could say, we love your proposal and change the water level order to adapt it. Or they could adopt something entirely different. It's, it's solely within their jurisdiction. You know, they have indicated that they're not going to come in and open it up and change it themselves, although they could. They could do it with no one asking for it. But once they're looking in it, they're going to establish a water level order that they feel is in the best interest of the Rock Lake while considering all those different aspects of how the water level order impacts Rock Lake. So I think that's all staff has to offer on that one. The dam is capable of, of doing this. You just program it to, once we know the dates, you just program it to raise and lower a certain amount each time. So there will be some, some cost associated with that, but it's not going to be, you know, tens of thousands of dollars to do something like that. It'll be, you know, thousands of dollars. And once it's set, it's set. Besides any recalibration that we have to do annually now, anyway. So the ongoing So the ongoing cost of changing it is not significant. Otherwise, Eric is online, if you have questions of him related to management of the dam and, or anything like that. There is no statutory deadline for review of water level order changes. The DNR has indicated that they'll be, they'll evaluate it as in a timely a manner as possible, but there's no way for me to tell you that that will be 90 days, 180 days, 365 days. I, I can't tell you when that might happen. So unlike other processes within the DNR, it's not laid out in statute, so it is, it is really at the speed in which they're able to accomplish it.
So I have a few questions, so maybe I'll, I'll kick it off. Mary, the, the data tables that you showed us, and thank you for all this analysis, and I know you gather data from a lot of different sources, and probably have lots of spreadsheets to support these graphs. I was noticing in the data tables, you know, starting in the 90s, there's 12 years of data, and then there's 12 missing years, and then there's the recent, most recent six years. So what, can you tell us about the 12 missing years?
Sure. So the current-
Was there no ledgers? Is there not enough data?
No, there are ledgers, but we, they're kind of missing and missing at the moment. I appreciate all of the city staff, Eric and Dan and others who have scrouched boxes in history and archives and everything, and we cannot uncover the data from 2007 to 2017, unfortunately, which is why I was very excited to at least consider the data. I, I've analyzed everything, including the data that I received from Colton, which actually was from 1980, which I didn't look at back in the 80s. But I started with 1990, and I went through 2017. Unfortunately, the closer I got to the installation of the WEAR, so the late 2016, 2017, the data was, was getting thinner and thinner from Colton's project. And so I, I have less data, but I, what I was over, able to overlay from Colton even, it confirmed the, I would say, early 2000s. And so unfortunately, if, if there were, and I've, I've asked all of the DNR team that I met with last Friday, if by chance someone like Will had copies of the 2000 and 2006 ledgers, if anyone, Will or anyone else from the DNR has the ledger copies from the late 7, late 2000s, I would love to gather them and add them to the mix and reassess whether the, the trends are the same. Anecdotally, like I said, well, Colton's data aligns. Anecdotally, I would say, based on some long, I'll call them long-tenured riparian owners' insights over time, that the, the conversation has been such that it appeared as if things changed as soon as the dam went in. And so I, I just have anecdotal that through the, through the entire history, through the late 2015, 16, 17, it was still running to this analysis kind of level. But it's anecdotal, since I don't have data, and no one else has been able to prove anything on that.
Well, I, I know I've, I've pushed my boat off the, off the dock, off the boat lift many times, so, so, you know, nature does run its course, it's up and down, and, and it, it wasn't necessarily in line with when the, the dam changes came in place. There, there were plenty of opportunities where, where the boat had to be pushed off the lift before that time.
Both before and after, yeah, yeah. And I guess, that's helpful to know, I guess, just perhaps we don't have that chunk of data, and I don't know if it would show any different result, but I guess I'm, I'm, I, I don't necessarily characterize the, the, what you've shown in the data maybe quite the same way in terms of, you know, the historic way we've managed. And I, by that, I guess what I mean is, it looks like we were out of compliance with our water level order, particularly in the spring, for many years. And why, and why DNR didn't do anything about it, I'm not really sure, but I, I'm not comfortable saying that that's the reason that we want to request a change in the water level order to return to some history of how we managed it, even though that wasn't how we were supposed to. So I guess, and that's more, I guess, reflected in, in the draft letter than what's in the resolution, doesn't really say that quite so much. But I guess I just felt, feel a little bit uncomfortable about saying we're requesting this to return to historic water levels. What I feel like is the, is the city's interest, because as I think Drake said, I mean, anybody could petition DNR to change the water level order if a waterfront owner just wanted higher water levels earlier in the spring, they, they could petition. I think, to me, our, our interest as a city, well, this isn't, to me, number one, protect the ecology and the natural resource of Rock Lake. To me, that should be our top priority. And number two, that we, as the dam owner, are operating the dam in a consistent and reliable manner in compliance with the DNR order. So what we've all learned over the last several years is that that is impossible during those two transition times. We just cannot be in compliance, because it's just this, on one date, you're supposed to change from one level to the next, and there's no overlap between the ranges.
We can't control when it rains.
And we can't control it rains. So to me, I, I guess I, I just, I, I'm generally okay with moving ahead with this, but I would like to maybe amend a couple whereses to just frame how I, I see this as we, we want to be in compliance, and so we are seeking a water level change to allow us, you know, an allowed transition from spring to summer and from summer to fall. And again, it's, you know, maybe it's just semantics, but that, that's what I would feel more comfortable with, and I, I do have some language that I can propose. So I feel like it's that tran, what we need, what we need is DNR to say, yes, it's okay to have this transition, and, and, and to tell us how that transition should be done, whether it's dates or .3 inches a day, or, or you know-
Or temperatures.
Yeah, whatever it is. Right, temperatures might be a little more cumbersome for us to manage, but-
There was an option that they rec, they said, they mentioned, I should just say.
But, and that will also help us explain how we operate our dam to our citizens. If it's more clearly stated in the water level order, and we're saying we're, we're operating in compliance with the water level order, then, you know, I think that if that transition is more clearly stated in there, I think that would really serve us. So to me, that's what I think, as a city and the owner of the dam, that's what's in our best interest, is to get clarity from DNR and to ask them to allow us to have these transition periods. That makes sense. So I guess, having said that, maybe I'll, I'll just make a motion to amend the resolution. And what I'd like to propose is to delete the last, the fifth whereas, and to replace it with two new whereses. And I'll just read them out loud. So the two new ones would be, whereas the current 1982 water level order does not provide a compliant means for the city to transition between spring and summer levels and between summer and fall levels. And I've got this typed up, so I can send it to whoever needs it. And then the second, the final whereas would be, whereas the city council of the city of Lake Mills believes it is in the best interest of the city and of Rock Lake to amend the 1982 water level order to allow transition periods between spring and summer and summer and fall water levels. So I'm here, Mary, since you were the author of it, I'll give you the-
The only thing I would like to check is-
Oh, that's, so that's a motion.
There was, there were some, there were some, like, we, I would like to just check to ensure that 1982 is the water level order.
Yeah, I would, I would say current water level order.
Yeah, because I, because I think that would, going back, there have been, there have been modifications to, yes.
I think there was an amendment in 95, was the latest one, but, when I was looking through the, the water level order that's on our website when drafting these things, I believe there was some kind of action in 1995. So I just wasn't, I'm just not sure if 82 is still the parent water level order, and then there were amendments to it, or if the-
So, so I'll revise my motion to remove any reference to the year 1982, and then just leave the rest there. Yeah, just say current water level order. And I did just email that to you, Steve, and to Misty, so that you, you would have that language. So that, so I'm, I'm moving to delete the last whereas and replace it with the two whereses that I just read.
I'll second that amendment.
Okay, thank you. Motion by Ms. Curler, seconded by Mr. Waters, to amend the resolution. Does anyone have any discussion or questions or comments?
I think that's, the amendment is awarded, well, I like it.
Okay, thank you. Steve, were you able to see it or follow along?
Yes, I'm glad you're reading through it. Thank you.
I might have a couple of other things in what I sent you, so right now it's just the, yeah, the two whereses. Okay, if there's no further discussion, can we have a, a roll call vote on the motion to amend Resolution 2505?
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Ms. Schmager?
Aye.
Ms. Quinell?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
So then I guess the other thing I, I had some thoughts about, and I, I'm just, as you said, I mean, maybe, I forget if it was Drake or Mary that said, you know, I'm not sure how DNR is going to respond, if they're just gonna see that this is a suggestion, and then they're gonna tell us, here's what we'll let you do, you know, within what you're asking for. So Mary, in your resolution, you have the, you know, increase by .3 inches a day. I was looking back, and I remember that Rock Lake Improvement Association's recommendation from last year, or maybe it was fall of 2023, originally was like a two-week window before May 1, and then a two-week window, you know, starting in September 16. And I wondered if DNR would be more receptive to it if we proposed a two-week window, or if it would be better if we just, you know, send them what you've got, and then they can change the dates or change, you know, whatever they're willing to approve. So I guess I just wanted to bring that up for discussion, because dates are probably easier to program for software and probably easier for citizens to understand, but, you know, we don't know what DNR's gonna do with our request one way or the other. So Mary, you've been looking at this a lot, haven't you?
Yeah, I have, yeah, I have some thoughts. Based on my analysis, I, I feel, I feel we are going to land on a date. I, I, spring off varies, or ice off varies. And on average, it's like March 25th, and so, however, I should state that some orders actually have, at when ice is off, becomes a date, and you hit your computer button, and then your WEAR or your dam or your program begins. And so I'm, I'm, I'm kind of, I, I think it is a DNR conversation regarding what concerns they have with elevating on, from ice off or elevating on post-date, whether it's, it's, I think that is, it is a conversation point. But it'll always be a date. Ice off will be a date, but that date will vary, and that's the only thing, to your point with, and we have a formal ice off. I know Eric always, he posts out when ice off is, is a milestone, I guess, he, he posts that, so it'll be a date, but it's just a matter of whether it's a, it's a date, year on and year out, or if it ice off remains. I think that is a conversation point, honestly.
Yeah, for lack of a better term, and Eric, correct me if I'm wrong, but when, right now, when ice off gets declared, you flip a switch, right? And it changes, the dam starts then operating in that spring mode. So the dam doesn't automatically transition, right now it does not automatically transition to spring season. It, it does it when-
You tell it.
Director Schreiner tells it to do so.
So there's a manual step that's required.
Or you're like, Eric, can you describe it better than my, you basically, you turn on the mode that you want it to be in when ice off occurs.
Correct. Yep, since that date is fluctuating, it determines whenever that date is declared, when ice off is, that is absolutely a variable. But we do have to manually switch into spring operation mode. Now, that's not a, you know, legitimate switch, it's, we just have to change the programming, go from winter operation mode to spring operation mode. But since ice off is continuously fluctuating, it could be any day throughout spring, that's what we have to adjust.
Thank you.
So I don't know if the DNR would get into the nitty-gritty of, like, they give you a formula, right, that you can only raise it by the amount per day, that when it, however many days that is, is the amount, you can raise it every day, so that on the first day of summer maximum, you would be hitting it at that point. Maybe, maybe they would write something into it, that probably would be novel for them. I, I don't, I don't know if that exists anywhere, but, you know, the fall's easier, because it's, it's a date, it starts, stop-start. Spring, we know when summer starts, we know when spring season ends, but we don't know when spring season starts.
And what kind of precipitation we'll get. So you could go for a while and not start moving at all, or you could have a bunch up front and have to mitigate that rise, yeah.
Well, they could still just give us a date of two weeks before May 1st. I mean, they could still say, that's the extra rain we're gonna let you have, and not, you know, prior. I mean, I don't, we don't know how DNR will respond, and like you said, there could be some species that are impacted by inundation that they may want to protect, we don't know. And then on the fall end, as you said, there's been some conversation about October 1, and so I think we've been told from early on that that October 31st date that's in our current order, DNR could change that. They're not gonna change it now, but if we ask for change in the water level, they may change that and make it earlier. So to the extent that some people like to have that later date, you know, that would be a risk.
I guess that's my main concern. I like the transition, how it's laid out here, but I, I guess this gives the DNR an opportunity to, to relook this whole situation and make changes, and will those changes be something that the community wants? Yeah, I don't know if this alleviates your concern, but I think there's been enough conversation around this. It would not surprise me if someone, if the city council chose not to do it, that another person, organization, or something chooses to make that request anyway. So since it's held in the public trust, the DNR's told me any person in the state of Wisconsin can ask to change the water level order. So not, the city council not asking, I understand the concern. I, the city council not asking doesn't mean that a request won't happen, and, or that the DNR won't simply do it themselves. They've told us they're not going to, but they have the right to do it if they chose to.
If they thought there was some ecological harm or harm to some, yeah, interest group, yeah.
And, and I just look at it that we have decades of, this is like, this is like a live science experiment, and I know, I know it seems uncomfortable saying, oh no, we've got this new machine in and we're going back to old. But we don't have really great understanding of how these changes that we've made by suppressing in the spring, and, and it may be that it's made things better, I don't know, but we don't have really any scientific evidence that, you know, some of the changes we made going faster in the fall has that been helpful or hinder, hindering. And I, I know, and, and trying to, again, balance the health of the lake and the, the recreation on the lake, and making sure it's not too complicated for the city team to manage. I mean, there's a lot of moving variables, but I, I'm, I'm certain that if this is not approved, that it will, some change requests will move forward, because the riparian owners that signed that, I get asked often, that signed that petition regarding concerns about not achieving summer minimums are still, I'm still interested in, in trying to get spring, in particular, spring, spring rain capture, actually. That's like the number one priority.
Well, it's interesting, because that, you know, there is some overlap, I think, between riparian owner interests and the city interests, but they're not necessarily identical. So, you know, to me, our, our number one interest is just getting some clarity on how to operate it in those transition periods, and, and perhaps some lean- in those transition periods and, and perhaps some leniency there. Um, but they could make some changes that we're not anticipating and then we'll have to live with those. But as you said, Drake, I mean, anybody could request a change and we would have to implement whatever DNR, you know, new order that they issued.
So a follow-up on Mary's statement about these changes. From a city point of view, is it, uh, is it something that we can program in and, and run at this point?
Yeah, and in fact, with the new dam is really the only way that this would be, able to accomplish this, because the level of precision would not have been possible with the, you know, raising by point three inches per day, this dam can do. The, the one prior would not have been able to. So we could do it. Now, if they came and said that we needed to measure the temperature of the water, I would be, I would be more concerned because that's, we, we haven't done it and where do you measure the temperature? And, and all that would have to get worked out. It'd be an entirely new system. Um, I don't know, I'm not concerned that that's gonna happen, but yes, the dam can certainly be programmed to accommodate this. The only other request I'd have is I know there's been, there's been some, um, differences of opinion. The letter that's attached is what's going to be sent to, um, the DNR. It is the document that is explaining kind of some things behind the request. Um, so I guess I would just want to make sure that the letter, it's coming from my office, but at the direction of the city council, I want to make sure it reflects the will of the body. And so if the council could offer some clarity on whether you want to reference a return to historical water level management, um, I would, I would like that clarified, um, so that I am not misrepresenting, um, the request from this body.
Well, I guess I, you know, I brought up that issue. And so, uh, speaking for myself, I would say I, I would prefer that the letter mirrors the resolution in terms of what our stated goal is in requesting a water level order change. I don't think there's any harm in referring to the fact that we have more data now on historic water levels. Um, I just felt a little bit uncomfortable saying, you know, characterizing our request as a return to historic water levels. But, um, so I, I think maybe they can coexist if that feels comfortable to you. But it might need, yeah, a little bit of editing to clarify that. Do other people feel comfortable with that? Mary, are you comfortable with that? I, I didn't study the text of the letter.
Yeah, I was just looking to see how, because I-
Well, as long as you're comfortable that I did my best to reflect the will of the council, I'm fine with that.
I guess one other, I, I don't, does DNR care about the things that we've already done? I mean, would it be worth, kind of like, like I did at the beginning here, like giving a summary of some of the things that we've already done? Or does that not really matter in their world?
Um, I did, I did talk to Erin today and she did review the materials that were in front of you and said that they believed it's everything that they would need in order to start this process. Not that they won't ask us for clarification or additional information in the future. Um, so that's kind of the best answer I have for you right now. Um, I don't think it would harm anything, but they, Erin told me this is adequate to start the process.
One very minor amendment I guess I'd like to make because of the partnership and the investment that, um, Jefferson County has made in this. And I, the, um, resolution is actually missing the name Jefferson, where it refers to the county office of land. So I don't know if that's Scrivners or if you want me to make a motion, but, um, okay, so in the fourth wherest, Misty, yeah, just to add the word Jefferson before county because they have provided a ton of, um, valuable field work and services and, and time and effort to, to help us. And they continue to support, you know, managing Rock Lake, so, thank you.
Anything else? Any other questions, comments, discussion?
Well, I would like to thank you all for your attention and for, um, you know, have this great conversation about this topic. Appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you, Mary, for doing all this work and keeping this, this, um, topic moving forward. Okay, so if there's no further discussion, uh, then can we have a, a roll call vote on Resolution 2505 as amended?
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Ms. Schmager?
Aye.
Ms. Quinno?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you. Um, so I would note that we have one item remaining under council business and then we do have a closed session. Um, and, uh, Mary, I know that you had kind of sponsored, um, put together some of the information for Letter E. And I wondered if you would feel comfortable if we postponed that to the next meeting?
I was going to propose that, so thank you, yes.
Okay, so let's postpone Letter E, uh, which is discussion about the performance review process to the next meeting.
Does it need to be tabled?
Tabled or just postponed? What's the-
I don't believe you have to make a motion. I think you can, I think it can just be a holdover. If you'd like, you can postpone, you can make a motion to postpone to the next meeting, but I don't believe it's necessary.
Okay, well, if you don't believe it's necessary, we'll just call it good and we'll, we'll have that on our next agenda then. Um, so that finishes council business. So our next item is recommendations for future agendas. So that will be one of the items. Uh, we'll carry that forward. Anything coming from Public Works or Plan Commission?
Um, dates are going, we'll be going out tomorrow morning, tomorrow, um, for a, to try and find a work session date.
So for the Sandy Beach work session rescheduling, okay?
We are, we're trying to find some dates that all of your resources are available to you.
And all of us. Yeah, thank you. Appreciate that. Any other suggestions from council members? Greg, I haven't had a chance to talk with you about this yet, but, um, at our last meeting, we had the final report from the Forest Committee. And, um, I've been reviewing some of their information and I have a, a bit of an interest in, um, looking at their ordinance recommendations. So I would like to work with city staff on some of that unless you, I know you sponsored the committee and so I didn't want to take, um, take over, um, something you might be interested in. But you can think about it and let me know.
Yeah, I, I did review the, um, the last meeting and, and found it very interesting. I, I haven't had a chance to pour through the documents, to be honest, but, um-
Well, let's keep in touch. I just don't want us to both be working on the same thing. But, um, I think they have some good recommendations that we might want to, you know, keep, move, move forward on, so.
Great.
Okay, thanks.
Need a motion to convey into a closed session?
I, I was just gonna do one more double check on future agendas. Anything else that people have? Okay, all right, then we'll move on to number 11, which is, uh, to convene into closed session to discuss potential real estate acquisition and/or site development opportunities within the city of Lake Mills pursuant to Wisconsin Statute, Section 19.85 Sub 1 Sub E, "For the purpose of deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session." So can I get a motion to convene into closed session?
So moved?
Second. Motion by Mr. Waters, seconded by, uh, Ms. Quinno. All in favor, please raise your hands, say aye.
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 Aye. Okay, so that's five zero. So we are now convened into closed session. Um, when we reconvene, we will be no longer televised, so that's the end of our telecast this evening. Thank you, everyone.